Well, hey, we're back. Technology keeps changing, though the room doesn't change much. We're back and Dr. Brown, what did we say the last time we were in this room was?
Locked at 2:00.
Wow. We were remote for quite a while, then we're a hybrid. We've been in hope auditorium, kind of spread out. And as I think we said, somebody said it, Dr. Brown, maybe it was me. The stage is called auditorium, it's a great place for students to perform, not school board members. We don't need to be there. And we're going to use a variety of means to maintain our meetings with folks that are here. Meaning, school board members that are here, the school board members that are remote. And we're going to do hybrid meetings. There will always be in-person meetings, and then there will be remote option. Our work sessions, Dr. Brown, at this point, are going to be remote, I believe, just to try to make sure that, or logistics and everything else, that we can have as many people participate and board members and the community can listen in as they did really throughout all of last year for a long time. So, but we will be in person in our full voting meetings, which this is one. This is where folks come to us and speak directly to us in the room. And also folks, we are set up to have folks participate in public comments remotely to correct, get their rights. So it's going to be in-person and remote, and so we're going to make that all work. We did it in the past, we're just in a different room. To that point, we do have a modification to the agenda. We will go back to a roll call, so when we do votes, and we do have a forum here. Yes, we have a forum here and with the folks at home. And so we'll do a roll call vote, and so we'll vote by voice, and that's how we will do it. And it will be legal. And to that point, as the rule, we welcome everyone here today. We have a modification to adjust it. Dr. Brown, if it's a Tuesday, we're voting on a personnel report, right? It's doing this for weeks now, and we hope that maybe we can't take a week off. But whatever you need, whatever the district needs, we'll be glad to. Glad to go on. So if we could have a motion to add the modification.
I move the modification of tonight's agenda with the addition of a supplemental personnel report.
Second by Maura. So we'll second it, and it's a prompt of you. You saw it earlier today, and here it is in print. And Tricia, if you could call the roll.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Corret.
Yes.
Kelly Evans.
She is here, but she is muted, Tricia.
Get your favorites on mute herself, she's a co-host. I'll come back to her.
Yep.
Sean Edwards. Eldra Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaFaye.
Yes.
Maura Lake. Yes. Chris Matham.
Yes.
Tricia Blasile.
Yes.
Kelly Evans.
Yep.
Okay, thanks very good. And so we'll just move on to public comment areas. And we have some folks that are signed up, and Sean, I believe, you have the list. Sean, lead us through it.
And my apologies in advance for my poor eyesight and inability to pronounce names. So be able to pronounce your name, that'd be very helpful. Every time I put my glasses on, they fog up, so I can't even see them more than what I could. So Maria, and if you could.
I'll say no.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing us to speak. And I am Maria Seco Chi Morano, and I'm the school nurse for Northeast Elementary School. And I also represent the nurses for our union. I, is it time for me to speak? I've wanted to speak with you since watching the August 31st board meeting, where you do a group contract with LifeStand to help fill our nurse vacancies. The services appear to be a hopeful solution to fill those vacancies. And I'm thankful for your attempts. However, I'm perplexed that you would approve spending $135 an hour to the staffing agency. Or, said another way, you would approve spending $132,000 per school year per nurse hired through the agency. Whereas I, after being a dedicated school nurse in this district for 70 years, are not even, I'm not even making $40,000 a year. I'm not the only nurse in this district making less than local industry standard. For comparison, the starting school nurse salary in Truensburg is $41,000, and in Lansing, it's $46,500. At ICSD, it's only $35,464. What is wrong with this picture, especially considering the very high cost of living in Pippa? With all due respect to the hard work that administrations put into creating and managing the ever-changing COVID policies, it's very rarely spelled out that it is the nurses who are the ones at the front line, putting their health at risk in order to keep everyone safe, even if it means constantly coming in close contact with students and staff who might be COVID positive. We are the ones putting the policies into practice, and this is on top of our already incredibly heavy workload. I don't have enough time to integrate the layers of duty we have as the sole managers of our health office, caring for hundreds of students, some with such medical complexities, or significant emotional needs, that to care for just them would be a full-time job. For all of this, we are not fairly compensated. Our union is in the middle of contract negotiations. I think it would behoove the board and all other entities that can influence nursing salaries to consider that the current prices of school nurse vacancies could have been averted if ICSD nurses were paid salaries that were competitive with the surrounding areas. I appreciate the effort of temporarily paying us a stipend while we do surveillance and diagnostic testing. Perhaps the grant from the American Relief Plan Act could also be used to temporarily boost our compensation. However, the permanent solution is to place us in a job class within our contract that reflects this level of skill and risk that we employ daily, and that would ensure competitive pay for new and veteran nurses. I know that the board is not the entity that negotiates our contract or our compensation, but you are the supervisors of those that do. There are five ICSD job postings today for school nurse positions at Paralline, Uppercut Heights, Enfield, Belshrim, and Waldorf, and one for an itinerary sub-nurse. This is a very large percentage of our ICSD schools. I hope that you consider our need for equitable, fair, competitive pay when you exercise your supervisory goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maria. Up next is Sharon. If you say your last name, I apologize, I don't want to miss.
Yes, my name is Sharon Ordway, I'm the nurse at the Iberica High School. I'm actually giving myself, because I have to say, I was extremely disappointed in the convocation that Mr. Brown presented to. He commented on custodial, bus drivers, food service, and at no point did he recognize the nursing staff. Again, this one is what Maria said, we do a lot, we do an awful lot. Last year, I worked at the high school. Granted, it was a difficult year, it was an unusual year. But I was the only nurse to manage approximately 1,400 students. This year, I do have someone working with me, but she wasn't working with me today because she had to get pulled to another building. So yet again, I was alone. Now, with those 1,400 some odd students in my building, and I was incredibly busy yesterday, and even more so today, with a stress level that I can't even describe. Besides taking care of what happens with everything that has to happen at the beginning of the year for all of these students, all the emergency plans, the emergency meds, trying to get people coming in who have symptoms. I have to jump into a COVID plan that's all new, I shouldn't say new from last year, but different. And coaching, I've got families who weren't here in the building last year, who could say, oh yeah, I know how this works, I gotta go home. But people who are in the building are nervous, the kids are nervous, they're anxious. I had people in my office with much anxiety, and I've got parents calling because they want to know what's going to be done, and who to contact. And I'm trying to troubleshoot, and I have kids coming in with emergencies today. I was not, I had people in my cops, I had people that I had to attend to for emergency care. And I'm trying to trouble all these things, and I'm one person. Hopefully, I've got someone to sit next to me tomorrow, but there's no guarantee, no guarantee that they're not going to call me to another building. And each building has kids with critical needs. Whether they're diabetics, or seizures, or they have trisphosities. There's something in every building that the nurses have to tend to as well.
Thank you, Sharon. Up next is Barbara Surza.
Yeah, I'm Barbara Surza, I'm a child nurse at the Lincoln Hospital. And I'd like to share my perspectives regarding the importance of recruiting and retaining school nurses in these very challenging times. We are facing a nursing shortage in our community and across the country, as Maria spoke to. Now, I was hired by East City School District in August of 1995, more than 25 years ago. It was a really hard decision to take the job, as the base pay for nurses at that time was less than $16,000 a year. I was working with the Chompets County Health Department at the time, and I made considerably more money than that. But the fact that the personnel department was able to give me credit for most of my years of service, it brought my salary to nearly what I was making at the health department. And it made it possible for me to accept the decision. Annual salary increases have made it possible to continue here, although I often work extra jobs to make ends meet. My current salary, while certainly less than I can make as a nurse elsewhere, is fairly acceptable. I've been fortunate to be able to continue to do the work I love, remain devoted to my school, the students, and the families for so many years. And here's why that's so vitally important. Every year, the job of a school nurse becomes more complex and more challenging, and we're tasked with managing increasingly difficult issues. This requires the nurse to know and understand their students and their families. It requires the ability to build relationships and trust in order to be effective in providing support. This takes a great deal of time, dedication, consistency, and the ability to serve as an integral part of the school community. I direct on a daily basis with students experiencing difficult personal issues who confide in me and seek support. And those students feel safe doing that because of the relationships that I've been able to forge. While currently baking positions with agency nurses provides a quick solution to our current shortage, it's not a sustainable solution. Currently, ICSD has contracted with an agency that provides nurses at a cost of two to three times what ICSD nurses pay. Increasing our base pay and getting monetary compensation for years of experience would help recruit and retain nurses who are willing and able to push fear to date you and go the extra mile for students and teachers. Now, I fear for our collective futures for a lot of reasons, but I truly fear what will happen to the health and wellbeing of our students. I'm going to retire someday, and I need to know that students in my school and in all of our schools will be cared for and supported by a nurse, will be fairly compensated and appreciated. I implore you to do whatever you can to get at it. The health and wellbeing of our students is worth that investment.
Up next is Kay Harrington.
Hi, I'm Kay Harrington. I was not taught it to actually speak tonight, so I tried to just do the best I could in about five minutes and made up some notes. I was hired in this district nine years ago. My base pay was $29,000. I've been here nine years, and I'm still under $40,000. So with that in mind, I would also like to just kind of go down a list of things that I jotted quickly to say like what some of our responsibilities are. Some people think that we are just basically like banated ice people, or that we just take a temperature. Maybe we look down our throat once in a while, but we do much more than that. We do medication administration, both oral injection, G tube, and rectal. We do assessment of patients for possible COVID and more this time. Care of students, both physical and emotional. Diabetic care, we do carb counting, calculating insulin units. Administration of the insulin, finger sticks, delivery pumps, and there are many of them. And each student has a different one, and we have to learn those. Continuous monitoring of dexcom ratings to keep blood glucose in safe zones. Administration of glucose tabs is needed. Seizure care, maintaining airway safety, rectal administration of meds, call for an ambulance in the event of prolonged seizures. Maintaining their, oh, I already said maintain care, sorry. G tubes, flushings, feedings, medication administration, flushing again if it dislodges, maintaining opening and sterile procedure as much as possible if it gets dislodged, because we've been told so many times by parents that that is one of the most important things, is to keep the opening. Suctioning students with trisphosities, which Sharon mentioned, asthma. We have asthma kids everywhere. So calling each family to discuss history of asthma and renewing all medical documents to make sure comprehensive care plans are created, making sure that appropriate meds are in the health office with a med order to legally allow administration of rescue medications. Calling families and physicians sometimes, many times, to get med orders faxed over and meds brought in. Assessment of students each time they come in to use rescue meds, distinguishing symptoms from other illnesses. We have food allergies with a risk of anaphylaxis, calling each family to discuss history of allergy, using history to create care plans, creating and distributing comprehensive lists of all students with food and/or meat and/or life-threatening allergies, to discuss with each student with all the appropriate stats. Assessment of a student if the allergen is adjusted. Managing classroom and cafeteria environments to ensure safety of each student. And then I didn't have time to fill in the rest, but these are just some of the other things that we consider on a day, that we deal with on a daily basis. Not that these things happen all the time, but we, at the moment, notice. We have students with broken bones, concussion care, post-concussion care, trauma injuries, head injuries, COVID testing, reports for results, contact tracing, return to school and work protocols, immunization records, physical exam records, vision, hearing, scoliosis screenings, office visits, connecting families and primary cares to dentist insurance, IEP and 504 reports, lice care prevention, sports approvals, verifying physical exams, medication orders, past medical histories and pelvic cardiac complications, body mass index reports and immunization reports. And that's just some of the stuff that I came up with in the five minutes that I was told I needed to speak and fill in for someone. That just is a part of our daily responsibilities, and we do it graciously. We do it because we love it, we do it because we love our students and we care about our students. When we talk about getting more staff in here, more nurses, and making it more appealing for them, you have to realize that, you know, we're not just taking care of the staff, but we're taking care of the most precious cargo that we have and our future. And so with that being said, you know, like all the rest of us, please consider, you know, making whatever positive influence you can on those that can help us make that change to repay nurses.
Thank you, Kay. Up next speaker is Robert Atkins.
I'm going to move. Robin Atkins, I'm one of the nurses at Keugah Middle School. I'm an IHS graduate, I'm also the mother of a 2019 LCS graduate. And tonight is the last time I get to say this somewhat fun and rare statement that I had won in college in daycare because my youngest starts kindergarten tomorrow at 11:00. In addition, it's my sixth year as school district nurse. When I became an employee in the district, the only way to make it work and to support my family and get a living wage was to accept a part-time position and work extra jobs. So that's what I've done for the last six years. I've worked two to three extra jobs, including staying on at Keugah Medical Center. I likely will never be able to make the jump to being a full-time district employee, which is a shame. It's no surprise to everyone in this room that there is a shortage of workers everywhere, including nurses. But if one takes a closer and deeper look, there are obvious pieces at play for the current district shortage. First, there's an evident inequality related to district compensation for school nurses when compared to the community nursing standards, pay standards. The district needs to identify more robust recruitment and retention strategies to improve their ability to attract new nurses to the school setting. Another amazing thing would be a commitment to increasing BIPOC Latinx and non-genderist stereotypical nurses, AKA male nurses, that would be more in line with the district's equality mission statement. I can illustrate ways that other employers are acknowledging the market value and rate of nurses, and then how they are recruiting and retaining them. If this district does not start these practices, there will be many schools without nurses. National trends and market rate adjustments need to be frequently moderated. For example, there have been three market rate pay increases at CMC since March of this year. So I'll put that into perspective. A nurse working at CMC has gotten about a $13 an hour increase since March, at six months. I've been working at this district for six years, my pay has increased $6.25 in six years. Yes, we're all talking about agency nurses, and CMC has agency nurses, but they are actively trying new and creative solutions to minimize how many they have and to invest in the nurses that they currently staff. There are weekly incentives for overtime, there's a COVID pay differential being forced. And there's a $30 an hour, yes, I said $30 an hour incentive that's currently being offered for any hours where over your additional beyond your normal state, scheduled shifts. There are sign-on bonuses offered, and there's recruitment bonuses given to nurses that refer new nurses. I'm not sure if any of you in this room are familiar with the 2018 BSN and 10 legislation that former governor Cuomo signed, but basically it states that all new nurses from 2018 graduating in New York State need to obtain a bachelor's degree in nursing within 10 years, even if they have a bachelor's degree in another field. This is a financial burden on newer nurses. There's no way a newer nurse can pay for the BSN tuition or their student loan payments with the current ICSD salary. There are many employers that do have this tuition, but ICSD does not. In my travels as a parent, a nurse, and a community member, I would say I get asked weekly by other nurses who are curious and excited to work at this school district. They want to know what it's like. But the first thing out of their mouth is, is that salary a typo? Is it really, is that real? There's no way that any of these experienced nurses could justify taking a 50% loss of their current pay. I can tell you with certainty, there's an interest in this community to work for the school district. If they raise their school nurse pay, there would be no openings, and there would be no schools without a nurse. There would be a line-out HR store. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Up next, we have Sam Nguyen, who is online, virtual.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, and thanks to the organizers for giving me a chance to speak tonight. I'd like to first say that I empathize with the teachers and the administrators for the tough jobs they're doing during these times, as well as the nurses, because they're definitely underappreciated. And this is one parent saying thank you for what you do for my kids. But I'm here because I want to address the issue of teacher turnover. And while I know that teacher turnover is high across the country, it seems particularly high in this district, and particularly where my kids go to school is Keugah Heights Elementary. I have two boys who go to school there, and recently it seems like they can't complete a year without having to get a new teacher, and sometimes multiple for a year. So what I want to know is what steps are being taken to attract and retain new talented teachers in these schools, different from prior efforts, because it clearly isn't working. And I've always been told that people don't leave bad jobs, they leave bad managers. And I'm not saying that's necessarily the case, I'm saying I want to know why. That said, I would like to know why so many teachers are leaving, and both at the district level and more specifically, Keugah Heights Elementary. In many cases, within Keugah, teachers aren't leaving teaching, which we know is a national challenge, but they're leaving Keugah Heights specifically for other teaching jobs. So first, what I want to know is, what is the current retention rate of teachers across the schools within the district? And are we seeing discrepancies between these different schools, so we can kind of figure out why teachers are leaving? What are some of the schools doing right and others doing wrong? And this will kind of help us figure that out. I'm not looking to point fingers, I'm really just trying to find a solution now, because it seems to be a real critical problem. A second, I'd like to see if there was some kind of impartially moderated form where these teachers can anonymously let us know why they're leaving. I want transparency. I don't need names of teachers, I just want to know why they're leaving. As parents, we want to know what's going on. A problem can't be fixed without identifying it first. So I want to know what is causing them to want to leave for other teaching jobs. Again, they're not leaving necessarily the profession, they're leaving here. And this is the education of my kids, and I really don't have any intention of letting them fall behind because of possible poor working environments in other schools. And I'm not saying that's the reason these teachers are leaving, I'm just saying I want to know why. And I think efforts need to be made to do that. And again, we need to know what are the differences you're not doing to attract these new students, teachers, because, again, it doesn't seem to be working. So again, thanks for letting me speak, and if there's any positive actions that come from this, I'd be really happy. Otherwise, I'm sure you'll hear from me or one of the other parents again about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Up next is Kelly, Kelly, excuse me, Oco, and my apologies if I mispronounced.
Hi, I'm Kelly Boyko. So I have three kids in the district. One's in fourth grade at Northeast, one in seventh grade at Dewitt, and a ninth grader at the high school now. I guess after I sat through that, listening about the nurses, I honestly had no idea that they were taxed quite as much as they are. That's a lot, please pay them more. I have some, like, three concerns, just little things that I wanted to say. As far as facilities go, it seems like, obviously, we're looking for a lot of custodians. But facilities themselves, like at Northeast, we've got peeling paint on the awning over the entryway, and it's been like that at least two years. I emailed Paula Alexander about it in June of 2019 and never got a response, it's never changed. They did take care of the pothole, but that I emailed about the same time. But I also sent an email on Monday and still no response. So I want to know, what should we do whenever we see things like that that need taken care of? Like, if we've already talked to the principal, and, you know, maybe they haven't gotten anywhere, and we're trying to move on, who should we talk to? As far as contact tracing goes, in elementary especially, how is the use of masks monitored regarding contact tracing? Like, who decides if the students are engaged and consistent? What is the wording, engaged and consistent and correct use of well-fitting masks? Like, I see the kids sometimes, you know, they usually have them on well, and the teachers, I'm sure, are doing as much as they can. But like, who's monitoring that to know if they actually are a close contact? And then the last thing is Chromebooks. My fourth grader took his Chromebook back on the first day of school, didn't come back with it, and I was really surprised. And I was told that this is not a school-level decision, like, it's a district decision. And I'm really disappointed in that, because, you know, I remember what happened whenever school closed in March of 2020, and nobody had devices, like, the younger kids didn't. And they couldn't learn remotely until they got them. And I would like my child to be able to take his device home, as I think everybody else should be doing as well. So I would like you to touch base on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we have two representatives from IPEI, Kelly and Courtney. Always happy.
Good evening, hi, Rob, Sean. My understanding was one of my board members, Courtney Reinhardt, was going to speak. I'm not sure if she has been unmuted yet.
She has unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Thanks, Courtney.
We can.
Okay, thank you, my apologies. So my name's Courtney Reinhardt, I am an IPI board member, and I'm also a South Hill parent. We wanted to start off tonight just saying thank you to the school nurses. We understand the workload that you have, and we hope We understand the workload that you have and we hope that you can make some progress. Thank you, Rob, for the opportunity to speak to you and the Ithaca City School District community tonight. We wanted to welcome back to our school buildings all of the teachers, staff, school leaders and families who make our school communities wonderful places to work, learn, and for us to send our children. Thank you, Dr. Brown and your team, for working so diligently to help our schools return safely to in-person learning. The Ithaca Public Education Initiative, or IPEI, turns twenty-five this year and is excited to continue our mission of connecting classrooms to our generous community through engagement gifts and grants. Through the dedication of our staff and volunteers, we're proud to share that we were able to open our grant process early this year and have awarded three grants totaling thirty-five hundred dollars to teachers and staff members at Enfield, Kyuga Heights, and Caroline Elementary Schools. Stephanie Colombo, Sam Tractor, and Leslie Kurzweil, thank you for the opportunity to support you and your respective programs. Kappa R. at Enfield, mountain biking at Caroline, and Ukuleles in Kyuga Heights. We also look forward to Northeast Elementary's use of funds from a Connecting Classroom Grant to begin the creation of their community garden and its related curricula, as well as seeing students in their new boots made possible via the Outdoor Gear Project. Our next deadline for grant applications for teacher grants of up to fifteen hundred dollars and one-time red and gold grants of up to five hundred dollars is October sixth. Information about these opportunities can be found at ipei.org/grants. We hope you will join IPEI's Board of Directors and some of our longstanding donors, partners, and friends on September twenty-third for our September Board Meeting and our annual meeting where we recognize Monica Tuinard as she finishes her term as IPEI Board President, elect a new slate of officers, and begin our twenty-fifth year connecting our community to our classrooms. Please stay up to date about our grant opportunities, as well as our upcoming adult spelling bees, spring scavenger hunt, by following IPEI on social media, at Ithaca P E I on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Thank you again for this opportunity to share with you. Thank you to our community for their ongoing support for innovative education in so many ways, including gifts to IPEI.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, IPEI, as always. Sean, do we have more?
We do. We have one more. Thank you, IPEI. And last on the list who have signed up, we have Karina Lockenbaum.
Hello, I hope you can all hear me. First of all, thank you so much to all the school nurses who just spoke. You are amazing. You are appreciated, and you deserve proper compensation. Now to my own comments. I'm a parent in the district. I have a high schooler who's vaccinated and a middle schooler who has a medical condition and cannot be vaccinated yet. The district is facing the biggest challenge in this pandemic. The Delta variant is twice as contagious, but you're trying to bring back twice as many children at half the distance. Local cases are still surging. They are now at a similar level as last December, when all the schools in the district went virtual for some time. Across the nation, cases among children are skyrocketing to some of the highest levels ever, and the pattern of new cases among children seems to track right along with school reopenings. The district is doing a lot of things right. Universal masking, updated air filtration, regular testing, and hand hygiene measures are critically important. However, I'm really concerned that the district just took a huge step in the wrong direction. As of Saturday, the rules for contact tracing were updated on the district website. According to the new rules, and I quote, "In the indoor classroom setting, students who were within three to six feet of an infected student, where both students were engaged in consistent and correct use of well-fitting masks are now considered close contacts." So they will be exempt from quarantine. In other words, a child who is later diagnosed with COVID could be sitting in the classroom for a full school day, but the kids sitting within three to six feet of them would not be quarantined as long as it's determined that everyone was wearing masks. For some reason, teachers, staff, and other adults who are in that same classroom would still be considered close contacts, even if they wore masks. This doesn't make any sense. COVID doesn't care if it's in the classroom or elsewhere. It doesn't differentiate between students and teachers. It will spread if there is no quarantine. Yes, yes, I know the decision to exempt classrooms comes straight from the CDC, but they made that decision before Delta, which is as contagious as chickenpox. We need quarantining to keep Delta in check. The latest models show that quarantining of close contacts can lower community spreading by up to ninety percent. Models also show that even if schools implement universal masking and weekly testing, like this district, twenty percent of unvaccinated students will get infected within a hundred days if there is no quarantining of close contacts. Yes, I know children are less vulnerable to the virus, but up to one in a hundred will require hospitalization. Ten in a hundred will end up with symptoms that linger for three to six months, and five in a hundred will have symptoms after more than six months. We really want to expose our children to that risk, especially since we're so close to the finish line. It looks like we may have vaccines for younger children as early as Halloween. As a parent, I beg you to please, please stick to prior quarantine rules for just a couple more months until vaccines for children under age twelve are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the people who were signing up to speak. Anyone else in the room? Well, I'm saying administrators in the room, but anyone else here right now? We got, and that's it for anyone at home that's listening. If so, then we'll just move on to board responses to what we just heard. And I know there may be some board responses now. Then we'll get to hear and meet from our student reps from the high school. So hang in there for a few more minutes and then we'll continue. Board responses, anyone?
I want to thank Maria, Katie, Barbara, Rosalind, Cheyenne for coming in and speaking. There is very little we can say because we're all in a little negotiation, as you all know. It is not that we can't say that we empathize with you. Cheyenne has been my kids for the past ten years. She has loved them. She cares for them. So as I think of all the listed people, I did hear love, and that is something that I have constantly gotten from her, Cheyenne, with my kids, is they feel very warm. Maybe my kids, when they're crying, and I still have to go to work, so I have to say that I completely appreciate all of you and the work that you do. You all make the school what it is. You all create the school community where students can say they're not doing well because they know that the nurse is going to like hold them. So I just want to say that I appreciate the effort that you do, and you all are on the front lines and making our community a safe space, a place where we all can go out and do the things that we need to do to provide, to drive, to find joy. That's the most I can say, but I don't want to sit in silence as if you all don't hear and see, as if I haven't seen Long and working, Kathy DeWitt, while also working for the district. So I just want to say that I see all of you and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thanks, Nicole. Or?
Just to echo what Nicole said, you know, we can't say much, but we've listened. And I also want to add that Barbara Sersa has given love to my daughter and six of my nieces over the past twenty-five years. And she's been there, and that they were there. And she continues to give love to my daughter, who teaches there. So I beg you all, my particular lover.
I'd just like to add just a quick comment that when we did approve that contract at the August thirty-first meeting, the administration very clearly stated, effectively stated, this is a safety net. The district remains committed to having a school nurse in every building. And that is not we, right? You can't get substitute years like you can substitute teachers, that's for sure, channels. And that is all that it is and nothing more.
So we've been trying to not have every board member respond, but I'm sure you're going to have every board member respond to this situation. I didn't realize this, Barbara, that you and I were hired the same year and started at LACS the same year, so.
We're used to it.
No, I was an actual teacher. I just looked much younger at that point in time. Pretty old now. We'll work on the numbers. My grandmother started a nursing program at my local high school. And so nurses have a special place in my heart. My mother was a nurse's aide. My aunt was a nurse's aide. My cousins were nurse's aides. So when you all come and speak about the significant amount of work that is done, it is not lost upon us as a board, as an active epileptic. I'm very much indebted to the folks who have come to my assistance on a number of occasions. And so as my other board colleague has said, we can't say much in this setting, but know that you are seen and know that you are heard. And we are greatly indebted to the significant amount of work you do, both within the school day and outside the school day. So greatly appreciate. Thanks, Sean. Board members that are remote. On anything that we heard.
I'm gonna, of course, second everybody's or third or fourth for the nurses that are speaking. Thank you. I can't say enough. And, you know, a lot of us know what a difference a good nurse makes, having them there, taking care of our children. My son's here now. I also want to take a quick second to say, you know, for everyone observing Yom Kippur, the next couple of days, we see you and hope that you're preparing. And if you're listening, thank you for listening. Karina, I share your concerns, and I sent an email out earlier today about close contacts. And I hope that that can be addressed in this meeting today for a little more clarity, because it is a really scary time. And also just thank you to the others. I know other people want to speak. Thank you for everyone that is speaking tonight.
Hi, folks. I can't thank the nurses enough for everything they've done for all four of my children that went through ICSD. The level of appreciation is hard to share, and also the level of difficulty to navigate what we can and cannot say. But I definitely want to say thank you and we appreciate you. To Karina, I hope we can also speak to what the information we get from the local health department and how we navigate that. And we could definitely, my ultimate goal as always is to keep everyone in the building, especially children, but everyone one hundred percent as safe as possible. And thank you for everyone who came out and spoke and shared this evening.
Others?
Yeah, I'll go. So I wanted to say thank you to the nurses as well. Especially Barb, I am so unbelievably grateful for you. And I am home tonight because my son had to spend most of the day with Barb, and she was phenomenal. He is a type one diabetic, and from the beginning of his diagnosis, she has just been an unbelievable advocate for him and has had more information at the beginning of it than I could have imagined having. So she has been an angel to us, and we do see you all. We do know how difficult this is for you. We do understand what you are doing on a daily basis. It is not falling on deaf ears, what you are saying. And I hope that you understand that we do appreciate you. And as a parent, I can tell you, there are no words for how much I appreciate you.
I just want to say that a couple of the other issues that were raised, perhaps some of our admin team can speak to, you know, the issues that Kelly brought up and the policy on Chromebooks going home, and also the issue about who's monitoring or how we're handling monitoring mask wearing.
And I was thinking we've covered that when we discussed school reopening, right? So it is front of mind, instead of getting answers potentially out of context, but we will cover those subjects. Right, right?
Yes.
Eldred, do you want to? All right, I asked. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Simply and quickly, Rob, how about that? Just want to also chime in. I have a brother and a sister who have both been nurses their entire careers. One runs the crash cart or used to run the crash cart for Syracuse University. My sister's been delivering babies for going on forty years now. So I get what you're saying about the complexity and about professionalism inherent in that job, and hopefully we can find a suitable pathway forward. I'd also like to encourage a gentleman whose name has escaped me now. He's talking about the teacher transitions throughout the district and at Kyuga Heights in particular. Please come to one of the work sessions of Human Resources. We have an HR work session where you can get much more information about specifically what we do to recruit, to retain. Unfortunately, there are cyclical moments like this. There are seasons in which retention seems extraordinarily difficult. It has very little to do with salaries. That's all I will say. Please come. You'll get your questions answered. And we're not alone. People are playing musical chairs throughout the state, throughout the education system at the moment. Reasons we all should be familiar with. Thanks.
Thanks, Eldred. Well said, everyone, and thank you all for coming, and we are going to.
I just want to give a shout out to IPEI, the board, and Steve, who made it possible for our students and teachers to do so many cool, different projects throughout the year, especially during a pandemic. Just being creative, working outside the box, relieving some stress off of teachers by just being a resource. And they usually always come after tense conversations, so they get behind in our thing. So I just want to give a shout out there.
Oh, absolutely. Cool. Appreciate it. And again, red and gold grants, the grant cycle is beginning, and they've done great. They have enabled great work in the district right at child level. That's tremendous. And we thank everybody for your comments. And well said. But we would like to get to student reps. Grace, it's great to see you from Ithaca. You're back again. And we have some new student reps tonight. This would be a perfect time, Grace, for you to reintroduce yourselves and the other student reps. And love to hear what you have to say.
Hi, my name is Grace Lynn. I'm a senior this year. Like, I'm a returning member of the student reps to the board from last year. It's great to be back in person, and I'm looking forward to productive. We are working with everyone at the board to create positive change in our actions. Also, you may have noticed our fourth member, Adam, who is here and our current member as well, he's not able to join us lately, too.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aitana Algar. I'm a senior IHS. I was elected to be a student representative to the Board of Education last year at the end of the square, and I'm looking forward to working with you all this year. The school year is starting up well at IHS, a quarter meeting for the first time after school this week. The Taller had its first writers' meeting, where many new students, freshmen, those returning students who wanted to explore the Taller. They got a chance to learn what else about. The girls soccer team had a game against Del Marra the other day. I'm excited for it. It's also begun this week. You know, also, I've just got a live. It's well exciting to students and teachers.
Hi, my name is Kadak Nawianna. I'm a senior at the high school also. I'm really excited to serve as a first member of the representatives to the board and thrilled to have this first meeting in person. I look forward to acting as a bridge between the student body and the board, and hopefully my term as a representative can be used to better inform the citizens of the board. While the pandemic is still ongoing, IHS is resilient and adapted to each challenge posed. Just this year, I've noticed a greater understanding and consideration of the mental health struggles of students as a result of the pandemic. In addition, during orientation, some of my teachers shared some of their own struggles with mental health over the summer. Hopefully, we de-stigmatize it while also bringing them closer to their students as a result. It is my first hope that I can use my position and thorough work, among other issues, helps to de-stigmatize and increase understanding of myself all the way just.
And then I would also like to give a update on some work we started last school year. Last year, the reps to the board started. Last year, the rest of the board started to work with Ms. Tom Callan and advocacy center to spread awareness about sexual harassment and assault. As we found out from our surveys, it's a really big problem at ICSD. Adam and I met with the sexual harassment and assault prevention team of the advocacy center, Mr. Trumble and Miss Verment over the summer. The student and the district team was able to create a website draft of a new page of resources survivors can use as well as a senior report form to incidents. But we can continue to advertise and spread these resources and the ICSD's clear cards policy. I and all the students at IHS are very grateful that ICSD is taking sexual harassment and assault seriously and are fully creating a safe working environment for all.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Ithaca. Any board responses?
I'll just like to welcome our new student reps. Hope you have fun. I hope we see each other in person all year. And Grace, I'm pleased to see you back and I'm really happy to hear that progress was made over the summer on the issue of sexual harassment and assault at IHS. Goodness.
And I really applaud you and the other student reps from last year who got that going by doing research, doing a survey and then you know, willing to commit time and energy to really make some change. Very impressed by that.
Welcome to our new student reps. And as our returning student reps know, that you can contact board members. We are more than willing to engage in conversations to learn as well as to try to facilitate change and Ms. Bergman has all of our contact information as well. So at any point in time, reach out and great to see if that breaks. And I hope our soccer team wins. I'll just jump in and again, welcome to you all. And as as we reiterate every year, you're sitting at the table. That means that it's great that you come and you give us updates about what's going on at Ithaca, frankly, in the district from your perspective. That does not mean that you cannot, as we move around the room and typically when Pat wants to speak, she makes eye contact or does does this thing. Regarding any subject that we are discussing or you can weigh in, you can ask questions, you can expect answers. We do that once once in a while. We expect answers or discussion. So don't think you can, you just have to sit there. That's what we sit here the whole time. But but as as a subject that comes across that is of great interest, certainly weigh in. That's, we need your perspective, real time. And and that's what we look to to you for. That's really bad. That's not, that's really bad English. But anyway, but we look forward to your input on the subjects as we we look forward to continuing to have full five day in-person instruction. You know, having the guy, all students back across the district and all the things that it takes to make that happen. It's it's pretty interesting dynamic that we have to go through to to make that happen. But I, one last thing for me, but I was actually able to go to the girls soccer game last night because I was invited. I couldn't just show up. I had been invited by a different race. Our friend Grace is one of the captains of the team. And she asked my wife and I, hey, do you want to come? And I said, of course, that's the only way I'm ever going to get in the stadium is to be invited because you do have to be invited. If there's a list and you have to be screened and and that's what we're dealing with right now. I hope eventually, yes, the gates will be open and all the kids can go and probably can go and enjoy the sporting event, enjoy a performance and call Grace and see you there. See all the great talent we have in this district on display. We hope that happens soon. But we'll get a glimpse of that, got a glimpse of that last night. And it was just great to frankly see a brand new refurbished stadium with kids playing the sport on it. It was the first time I saw it and frankly, it was one of the first real games that has been played on that turf at that stadium. So it's great to see. It was rewarding to see a glimpse of things to come. So appreciate your efforts. Appreciate your willingness to sit here with us. And I'm looking to others, anybody else needs to weigh in? I just talked a lot, so. I talked long.
Welcome, student reps.
Thanks, Chris. So we're, so I think if we're if we're good, Elder, do you need?
I'm good, Rob. Just as quick as Chris, welcome. Looking forward to working with you all. You train us well.
I would think that to me, or to Grace, to Ross Point in terms of like, we're part of this space. You're also the context experts, like you're inside, but don't think you're here to give us a sustainable experience. They're here for our teachers, our captain team. That's their lens, that's their experience. And we want to get your experiences because they are a huge part of the puzzle and why most of us are sitting here. So I would encourage you to take a lot of leadership and guidance. Grace and Adam really engaged last year and brought the activism to the next level here. I really appreciate all the things that did last year.
Very good. Thanks. Thanks, everyone. And we'll just move on. We do have business to get to. And the first item of this is the consent agenda with the modification with the personal report and a few other items.
I'll move to the sentence each other with the modification. Second?
Right, Pat. Any questions, things to point out? By anyone? Second, it's not real long. It'll be good. Tax law, et cetera. I think that was explained a bit. We know what that total dollar value is and what's what's it is. So. Okay.
Next one.
Should, should we ask for a quick comment on the tax warrant this year, giving some of the changes that have taken place? I know it's explained to us as the board, but for the public, is that okay? Amanda, are you in a position?
Absolutely. So the tax warrant is on the agenda. The tax warrant essentially authorizes the Ithaca City School District to be taxing and speak, be able to collect the taxes in the amount of our levy, right? This is the amount that we put in all of our budget documents. It's part of our revenue. It's the largest source of our revenue for Ithaca City School District. That is $95,525,492. You'll see that. That tax levy amount. The attachment to the warrant is essentially the way that it is spread around all of the communities and make up the Ithaca City City School District's tax base, right? There is a taxable value to all of those communities. When you add up all of the assessed values, businesses, homeowners, right? And you add that all together, that comes up with a total assessed value. Essentially, basic math, right? The numerator is the tax levy, the denominator is the total assessed value. All right, those divided gives you essentially that tax rate per $1,000 of your house. So if you have a $100,000 house, you take that tax rate, right? And then for every $1,000 worth of that, you pay the tax rate. Last year, our tax rate, and I just want to get this absolutely right, last year, our tax rate was $16.58. But it's actually, there's six decimals to that. So it's like 59 cents. Okay? This year, our tax rate will be actually $16.84. Okay, so that is almost identical to the amount of taxes the year prior to last year. The taxable value for the community is based on July 1, 2020. That was in the like the midst of the pandemic, right? And so what we know is that this year, the total taxable value was frozen at a moment in time. It was much lower than we anticipated because that total taxable value typically goes up large amounts each year. Next year, we anticipate that that total taxable value will get kickstarted again. New assessments will be made on all the properties and tax rate will most likely go significantly down if we go to the levy.
Second?
Tax bills will, what's the warrant? It's by everyone, the tax bill will be mailed for the end of September. And you will receive them, the first tax collection period without penalty is a full month, October 1 to November 1. The month of November has a penalty to it because that's considered to be late. And then the month of December is also open, but that's even a higher penalty if you wait to pay your taxes. Many folks pay their taxes through escrow, which is part of the way that they set up their mortgage. So many people don't ever even think about sort of writing the check directly for those taxes. It's all been automatically taken out through your bank. If you are going to be paying your taxes, we have lots of ways to do that. You can actually pay with a check. You can pay through an ACH, which is an automatic withdrawal. You can pay online. We have links to that as well. All tax bills are online. You can go to taxlookup.net. If you, you know, if you thought you misplaced your tax bill or you can't find your tax bill, or you think you didn't get your tax bill, taxes must be paid whether or not that tax bill is in your hands. And that is something that the school district does not control. That is New York State law. And so and those penalty periods are also set. So the warrant is essentially is like district, you can move forward and bring in that revenue taxpayers. That is between you and New York State and and the county assessors office in terms of what your assessed value is for your home and how much you'll be paying. Does that help, Sean?
It does. I just want to add one thing to make sure that this is not something that the Board of Education decides. This was voted on by Ithaca City School District voters in May.
Right, this levy amount.
We are just affirming what was already voted on by our community. In terms of what the actual amount is now that the assessments have been redone. Right? So make sure for folks who are listening at home, this is not anything new for the district. We are setting the rates based on assessments based upon what our community voted on for the amount that we should, that we can.
That is so, and and the key point there is we we share the levy amount, which is in our control. The total assessed value is not in our control, right? That is, that is set, that is set as a group across communities by the county assessors office as they go and they assess your house as things are sold or purchased, as things are built, as factors in terms of inflation, right? That is, those are all things that are out of control. We control the revenue that we bring in. And that is the amount, if you look at all the budget documents, that is the amount that we need to run the operations of the school district. And it is at the tax cap. Therefore, did not require a super majority. It was based on a calculation that we have to show publicly to New York State to show that amount.
Amanda, I'm very impressed at how clearly you can speak through a mask. It is, you know, that is Amanda, you have it good.
Oh, thank you.
So but but thank you for that. I mean, it is important that it is clear what we vote on and what's but so appreciate it. Any other, any other questions? That was obviously one of the bigger. Are we good? I'm not seeing any questions. Tricia will do the role. Move seconded for the consent and so we vote.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Cryer? Erin Cryer?
Yes, yes.
Ellie Evans?
Yes.
John Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Warner Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
Thanks, Pat. Dr. Brownlee took the took the clock out of the room, but something, something in this thing that I have in my pocket says it's about 8:28 that you get to talk now, Dr. Brownlee. It takes, it takes us a while, but Ronny, you and we love to hear about reopening and where we are.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to me. And yeah, I just sent a message to my team, asked for the clock to come back to this room. So for the clock to come back into this room in the near future. Well, again, thank you. It's great to be here. It was great to see our nurses here tonight. We so often see Carrie Burke, who represents our nurses at meetings. She's speaking at every meeting. And we always talk about our nurses and thank them. And it'll be good tonight to see them in person. And I'm hoping for the folks who are still listening, who will listen to this later, that they also recognize and appreciate the process that we're engaged in currently. While we love and support and appreciate our nurses, we all recognize issues with compensation. And that's why we have negotiation processes, processes to take, to walk through that. And we're in the midst of that right now. So when you heard a woman was saying that we can't say much and we shouldn't be talking, that's because we're negotiating with one of our largest bargaining units currently. And the conversations about compensation have been occurring and will continue to occur in that space. But that is not to take away from how we feel about our nurses each and every day. We're here today because of our nurses being on the front lines and supporting our students at where they're at. So again, I hope we can get their thinking in here at other times on other issues. I mean literacy, math and all those other things. For those of you who saw it tonight, they're sharp and they're smart. We could use them. Although they've been up since about 7:30 this morning, taking temperatures. We know it's late because of late night for them. But I'd be interested in engaging them in other conversations after the conversation about compensation. And with that, we want to merge the superintendents up there with a bunch of other items too. But first, we have on the agenda, I was supposed to talk to students too. And y'all took my time, but I do have a couple of other questions that y'all, and we're going off script right now. You can put your laptops down because you're not going to be able to go there for an answer. All right. So second, a couple of things I want to note for you, because I've been asking this question all day. We've been at school almost a week now. What has surprised you in a good way? You've seen something, you've heard something, you've experienced something that's new and that has surprised you in some way. What has it been? Can you tell us something? Go for it.
I've been really surprised and excited by the increased awareness of like students' mental health. I touched on this earlier in my statement. But like, some of the teachers like share their experiences of their own mental health struggles over the summer. And I think that really resonated with the students and helped bring them close together and also increased the de-stigmatization of mental health crisis.
Thanks for sharing.
I've been surprised by just how seriously and like grateful for how seriously the administration is taking the pandemic. I know that like this morning, Mr. Trumble phoned me and asked me to the entire school and showed a video about talked about the masks up. And that was a very helpful video. And it's just really nice to see that the administration cares about us.
Thanks for sharing.
I think one thing I was surprised about this year is that we received our English, some of this is like yesterday. And I like to have a lot of the readings and I first haven't watched. I haven't seen. And then just something in general, just a lot of people is crazy, but I got paid. I said, I'm glad that this year, this taking a lot of good.
Thank you. Now I'm going to put you on the spot with this one. Before March 2020, I used to get emails almost daily from students saying, if I were superintendent, I would. And typically, that means that you wouldn't see on the public board. But I would give them your email. And I would always say, yeah, one day you're going to have this job. Since March 2020, no one written me about if I was superintendent. No one wants to be in this job right now. But if you were tomorrow, you were in this seat. And that's not something about the bureaucracy and all that other stuff you have to deal with. But if you could make, you could do something in this role right now, what would you do tomorrow? Is that always fact, is that always fact, right?
I think I would increase communication with students. I know some emails to their parents, like about, remember last year, like there were emails about COVID cases at school. They went to parents only and also some other communication. And I think sending that also to students would be really good and would help the families that are about to be visited.
Appreciate that. We got that from our superintendent, but we got to be better about those emails. Thank you.
I think if I was superintendent today, I'd want to try and foster better student teacher relationships. I think there are ways where students and teachers can connect outside of the classroom. That can be very helpful for both students and their education, but also teachers just getting to know their students, getting to know how they operate and what they need to be successful.
Okay, awesome. Agreed.
I think I remember from last year, a lot of the teachers actually had a lot of like, I think, communication issues with the administration. So I think try my best with that because if we have better communication of this. So I think if I was to try my best with that, because if we have better communication of this uh teachers, we can also encourage like the students' education and how they know about their.
Appreciate you, thank you. Last one, I promise. Uh, today, where? What's the question, now you've been doing this for five minutes, what's the question you want me to ask?
What was the worst thing, what was the worst thing that you've heard?
It goes to your mind, yeah? What question do you want me to ask and then answer? Something my kids struggle with this one too when I ask them.
What can I do to um improve like student communication and with like the board? I feel like it's also important, it's also our job to bring student communication back to the board. So I think it should also be part of the board's responsibility to also like reach out to students.
Thanks for that, great question and that awesome answer, appreciate it very.
Um, I think a question that I would want you to ask was um, what do uh we as student reps want to accomplish uh in our position? And I think my answer to that would be to um represent student voices, make sure they're heard um at the administrative level um and to just advocate for the needs um in any of those.
Awesome, thank you.
I think my question that I want you to ask is how can we, while also maintaining uh working relationships with the district, also maintain a relationship, relationship with the administration and act as a bridge between students, administration and the board? And I'd say um as student reps, while we have a commitment to work with the administration and the student body and acting as a bridge between them to getting their voices heard to the administration and also working with the administration to influence the policies that benefit the students, also working with the board.
Appreciate that, thank you. Yo, I, I, real quick, uh, I went to Board of Education meetings every Tuesday night as a student. From the top, as long as I can remember, my father took us. And she would take my brother and I to meetings because we didn't have childcare and because the only time she could talk is if we were in person. And she would talk about the inequities that were plaguing our school district community that resulted in young people who look like us and coming from that dirt road we grew up on, not gradually. But every Tuesday night through high school, we went to board meetings, probably why I'm superintendent today, for some reason. But we went to every board meeting and what I remember from those board meetings is that they just, people just waited for us to stop talking. No one ever saw us or listened, she kept going. And she kept saying, and even our TV back there, it's only about six people ever heard us. But she went every single time. But I want you to see and feel and hear, and we want to struggle with that because we've been a part of a system that did not empower your voice, but didn't even see us. What I want you to hold as accountable for is to see you, to hear you and do something about it. If I had someone just one time say, we see. We see you, Bo Bell, Bo Bell, y'all sitting there for four hours, quiet and not talking, we see you. We see your mama coming to the meeting every meeting and saying, do something about what's happening with my baby. All we want to do is be seen, but here, we want to see you and do something about it, all right? So we love y'all, appreciate you being here in the middle of the night talking about this good work, all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you, love you. So we're going to transition, if you can, to talk about the beginning of school. Because I got to tell you, I'm fired up in ways I haven't been probably at any point in my career. Maybe we need, having a pandemic sort of helps you appreciate being back in person again. I don't care about the mask, I don't care about the protocols, I just am happy to be back. And we're going to share with you some of the images we have, talk about some of the things that have been happening, the good and the bad. Because it hasn't, it hasn't been perfect, but it has happened. You know, one of the, I was talking to my team, something I've journaled about and written about and will never forget, talk about imperfection. The first day of school for our middle schools, at one middle school, many of them, as we were hoping to welcome them off of the bus, no one there got their fresh shoes on and a nice little outfit on. The first thing they hear from us is you got to go back home? So it ain't been perfect and it's because of a technical issue with the water main, that kind of thing, you know, that test the water. It keeps coming back around here. But anyway, that's happened, but at the same time, we've also, I've been, I've been, I was at the high school on day one and two, and both days I heard young people say, I love school, I love being here. So we've seen it, we've had young people coming into our building and they're having a good time. We're using our outdoor spaces, we're using spaces and innovative, where we had visitors from Union and the Cottages. And they saw our spaces and actually took notes about how we were renting new desks. Thank you, Mr. Bryant, and all the folks who made it possible for us to get the new furniture and the space. And I'm talking right now, I'm hoping somebody is pissed with showing up, putting people out there. Uh, you see some of the, the configurations that uh we're using inside and outside of our building to engage in these conversations in a safe way. You're seeing, you will, you will see, you know, we're, somebody, I've seen somebody, I think it's trying some of our new curriculum, some of the work that we've developed over the summer, over the past couple of years, our anti-modulation curriculum work, I've seen being implemented on day one and then day two, which is beautiful, it feels good. Yes, Miss Tom, we're going to talk in a minute about some of the protocols and some of the shifts, some of the protocols that we've had to make um and how it's consistent with the state, local, national guidance that we receive, what that looks like. We're not leaving out Miss Tom, because we, we, we took it at this.
I think you're doing great.
All right?
Yeah, yeah.
How about, well, while I catch a breath here, uh, how about we talk about some of the health and safety protocols that have, that we plan for, some that have shifted, and how it's worked so far?
Sure, so there were some questions about masking and how to both uh support and encourage mask games. And I would say that the time was great at reminding us about what happened this morning with Mr. Tremble doing an announcement, right? So it comes, it comes in all forms, right? It's about those visual reminders, it's about those interpersonal relationships, right? We all know the international sign for, put it up over your nose, right? We do this. Um, I was, I was at Enfield most of the day, actually in the nurse's office and just had to do this curiously, right, for, for, for kids to remember. Um, and then it's about, uh, it's, it's really about those, those constant reminders. Now, how does that fit in with some of our contact tracing support that we help the Tompkins County Health Department engage in? Uh, yes, indeed, our FAQ's did shift because the Tompkins County Health Department has instituted clarified and new, right, it's COVID, right, there's always something new, right? Um, new contact tracing protocols in regard to quarantine. Just as a reminder, the Tompkins County Health Department is the only entity that can quarantine. So we actually don't quarantine as a school district, right? The Tompkins County Health Department does that and we support that. Um, so it may just be helpful for folks to know what happens when a positive case does arise. Did have a positive case arise today, right? So there are a number of things that happen very quick succession. And my partner in this is the wonderful Carrie Berger, coordinator of Health Services and Wellness. Um, and fortunately, unfortunately, as we like to say, you're very well versed in this process, right? So um we confirm a case through the Tompkins County Health Department. We also look for self-conformation, right? So folks can give us a screenshot of that detected test that helps us and it really speeds up our process, right? Principals, nurses, everyone knows within the school to immediately contact us so that we can begin this process within seconds. Uh, we identify close contacts through a series of questions using an internal document, right? That allows us to look at everything from where the student or where the individual has been throughout the last twelve, uh forty-eight hours since either being tested or becoming symptomatic, right? Again, that's using the Tompkins County Health Department protocol and then we support that, right? And we look at the duration, we look at the proximity, and we also look at mask, masking or unmasked, right? And we're adding in, right, that proper, right? Um, so that is something that we do rely on staff to report to us as we assist in this contact tracing. And ever, we then quickly notify folks, so if it's during the school day, then those folks go home, so we call them. And we also send a follow-up email, so it's in writing, so they know where they can go if they have questions at the time, that we share their information with the Tompkins County Health Department. Um, we arrange for transportation if necessary to send folks home. Uh, then we notify the school's community, so the principal sends a PDF to staff. Our communications department notifies families, she posts it to the website so everyone can see. And communications notifies our union leaders and our district administrators, so everybody knows. We can coordinate meals and learning materials if necessary, so um that's correct. Our, our Chromebooks and our iPads for elementary kiddos are not going home at the moment, right? That is because of the significant loss of inventory and our, our really swift responses and our ability to quickly distribute those materials given our well-oiled system from before. We're always open to change systems as well, but again, we had significant inventory loss last year. Just trying to be mindful of that, right, and be mindful of our resources. Um, then we begin distance learning, uh we clean spaces if the case was within twenty-four hours. Again, these are all just following the New York State Department of Health guidelines and the Tompkins County Health Department guidelines around quarantine and how, how we support that. Um, if you are curious, the, the full contact tracing protocol for pre-k through twelve students is there on, on our website. Um, and it identifies, you know, in classroom settings and non-classroom settings and then in outdoor settings as well. And anytime there's a change, we make sure that it's, it's updated on our FAQ's. We make sure that our, um, that all of our administrators know, that our nurses know as well. It's really a partnership in order to make sure that we're supporting public health throughout our community and working really closely with the health department. I probably talked too.
No, you, oh, okay. Thoughts, questions from the board now about reopening students, about reopening reflections? Anything else to share? Talk about opening any sessions, yeah.
When a, a student is, is at home because of they've been quarantined, how does distance learning take place?
Yeah, so there's, um, again, on our, on our FAQ's, it's really handy. There's really the four different scenarios that are outlined. So the question is, what will happen if an in-person class, a group of students, or individual, right, uh students or teachers need to transition to distance learning, sorry, isolation because of quarantine, because of sickness, et cetera. Um, so the four big scenarios, right, are all in person, that's what we, what we hope for as much as possible. If, uh, obviously things continue as normal that way. If the teacher is remote temporarily and the students are there in person, right? So there's, uh, there's a couple of different ways that that could work. If we are able to find coverage for that, right, which, you know, you know, we have this national shortage, staffing shortage as well. Um, that, uh, that will have a substitute, right, covering. There are days when I'm a first grade teacher, when other folks are, you know, stepping in and handling things. So we all really pitch in, of course. Um, if there are some students who are remote temporarily, um, then the teacher is in person. So at, um, at elementary, folks are using Seesaw and Google Classroom to upload things um synchronously, right? And our, uh, our engaging, so kids have the opportunity to engage with that there. And at the secondary level, that's really around Canvas, right? So there's that ability to access Canvas as well. And knowing that there are up to, you know, eight different classes that kids are engaged in learning. We understand that there's more significant complexity at secondary. So you'll see soon that there's a hosting for uh secondary remote lab teacher supports that will occur twice a week for, for students to check in synchronously with, with an adult, with a teacher to get some additional support, keep that social emotional connection to the school, et cetera. And uh the idea is to, to keep up and support communication, support work completion, et cetera. And then there's all remote, which is the fourth, right? We're also well versed in transitioning.
My first, yeah, me to that, sorry. Sure. I think this ties into what you're seeing around some of the exemptions for quarantine requirements and that that's based on what the CDC has found, which has transmission in schools, and the risk as well. And so the expectation that this year, we will be quarantining fewer students than we have in the past. We can't actually say, no, the health department will be quarantining fewer students than they have in the previous year. To Lily's point, you know, we're always in, you have to work on consciousness.
Carrie and Kelly, uh, raise your hand up, Luke.
Yeah, um, so my question, I'll actually let Lily tell me if she wants this question now or later. Because my question is that is about the testing um and whether or not we have an actual start date of when we're going to begin the testing in school so we can potentially avoid quarantining.
Oh, that's great, that's a great question. So Carrie and I have been meeting with folks, wrote at CM, I'm sorry, HUGA Health Systems and ROCE, we've also met with a national group called Stfinity as well. Um, and so right now we're in the process of finalizing precisely of the who and the when. Um, so we're meeting with our, uh, our wonderful nurses and building attendants all this week to finalize that, those last details in order to officially begin the start date. HUGA Health Systems indicated that they can start as early as uh next Monday. Um, so we're, we're really hopeful that that's the beginning for at least diagnostic testing. Uh, but we'll be sure to let everybody know as soon as, as soon as we know. What's interesting too is that, um, the, in the region, the folks, you know, all of our other component districts and the TST region uh have been uh looking, looking to us to support their processes, just knowing that we did testing for six months prior to this mandate coming forward. So HUGA Health Systems and ROCE is asking to start with our school district um because we have not many more processes set up in place.
Oh, I just had a question, how is uh contact tracing being implemented at schools like uh specifically during lunch times? Because I don't know exactly at the elementary schools and the middle schools, but at the high school during lunch. Uh, in regular classes, there's a little QR code that students can scan to let um tracers know uh where they are if they have a contact with a case, but at lunch periods, that is not the case, so I just wanted to know.
Yeah, we rely on staff and student interviews, right? So, um, for example, if, uh, you know, if a student was eating lunch today um and they became symptomatic later, right? We would look at their lunch period today and yesterday, right? So we actually call the families directly as well and let them know that the Tompkins County Health Department is also going to contact them. But we like to have that information as quickly as possible, right? So that we can, um, and send students home as quickly as possible. And we also recognize that there's a great deal of flexibility for lunch, especially at a high school, which we think is a good thing. We want to maintain. Um, so again, you really rely directly on the staff who are, who we're supervising and the students themselves.
And Lily, just to, just to be clear, uh, for my own benefit, but uh when students are remote, you mentioned Seesaw and Canvas and obviously those computer-based programs. And so if a child does need to be remote, part of that package that they would be, would get if they are remote is certainly, uh, if they don't have a computer laptop of their own, they would be provided with whether it's Chromebook or whatever, depending on that.
Correct, yeah. Yep.
It's not that we don't have any, um, resources. It's just that we can't, we're not going to send a computer home with every, every student's not gonna have one all the time. Is that?
In, in pre-K through five, that's correct. They're not taking them back and forth every, every single day, correct?
Just trying to be, trying to understand that, uh, thank you. First one.
I was wondering about like the QR codes. Uh, I understand that it's used for contact tracing now. I was wondering like how it's implemented? Because I doubt that students are actually like filling out that form like every single third day when you can like just use your schedule, I believe, as that's what it's called. We actually use both, Grace. So we go through, um, and we use both the, the QR code. It's just this massive spreadsheet, frankly, uh, with the timestamps every time we go in. Uh, and we also look at the student schedules and that's part of why attendance is important because it allows us to see, um, whether, whether students were there in person or not. Um, and then we can, then we are able to match that with, with the other and see if there are any discrepancies, right? So it's sort of a, it's a safety net in a lot of ways for us to allow for us to, um, you know, be more cautious, probably, and more, I would say, uh, as detailed as possible.
So to follow up on that question, Grace, there's something that we are struggling with, uh, multiple college campuses as well. And I think it's something for us all to pay attention to, that contract, contact tracing and please, Carrie and Lily, correct if I'm wrong. It's an imprecise science and what we really need is to be thinking as communal as possible. So the more that we actually scan, the better it is, the more that we actually are in attendance, the better it is, the more that when we get contacted or if we get contacted by the Health Department, to be as informative as possible, the better it is to make additional phone calls. And that's, um, historically not the way in which most of us operate, right? It's much more about my own individual, what I do. And so if we can start continuing to build a culture of, of communal thinking and communal healthcare, I try to remind my students that I'm not wearing a mask for my health. I'm wearing a mask for their health and they're wearing a mask for my health. And so how we engage in that process, I think will be essential um, in terms of how we try to take care of one another. And so, um, we're trying to get better at something that we've never had to really work on. We're trying to build a community culture and something that has not been something similar to this. And for many of us, it may feel invasive, but it's invasive for a reason to be able to protect our colleagues, our friends, our teachers, our community members, our loved ones. And so that's what I've been working with, at least with my college students. I don't know, Carrie, if that makes sense or Lily, if that's something that you all are thinking about the same way as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And from our conversations, our weekly conversations with the Tompkins County Health Department, that's really how they're thinking about it too. And I think they would, they would rather err on the side of caution and be, being safer, even though, even if it's inconvenient, unfortunately, than if it's not.
Other items, wanna touch on other questions?
Thank you all.
Don't hear anything from, I guess we're good. Okay. Almost reaching, but, uh, don't, uh, don't wait too long, Sean. Um, we always, uh, we always appreciate comments from any, uh, input from all, um. Anything else, Dr. Brown?
Good, all good, America.
Tomorrow's another day, right? Uh, their kids will come to school tomorrow. We don't have to stay here all night. So we, uh, uh, any other discussion items from the gallery in the back or, or we all good in the back? Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Uh, and Lily, Dr. Brown, uh, so far. And, uh, so Jason Trumbull yesterday, what was that? He was going to the tennis match. Apparently he can just walk wherever he wants. I have to be best, but it, but it's okay. Uh, it was good to see Mr. Trumbull that he was excited for if I got, I'm excited for it, Doc. If you don't know, uh, I'm the only, I'm the lone Ifiga high grad on the board. And I would, you know, in deference to Dr. Brown, I never went to a school board meeting. And, uh, and so you know, I was told by my classmates years later that if there was a vote, uh, I would have been voted least likely to be school board president. So you just never know. Uh, it takes a while for some of us, Dr. Brown, to find a voice or, uh, but it's a pleasure and an honor to sit here, uh, at this table uh, to be a part of the city school district in some way. And whatever we can do, Dr. Brown, as board, to continue this work, continue the great work that students do every day. That's kind of, uh, that's really what, uh, that's why we're here for the rest of the school year and, uh, and it's only September, right? So it's, it's okay. Uh, look forward to eventually seeing a football game this guy, but, uh, uh, and that will happen if I get invited, maybe somebody, that will happen. But anyway, uh, upcoming dates are important. Next week, uh, the twenty-first, that's facilities work session, finance work session. Uh, facilities, uh, Amanda, we're gonna, if we, uh, again, we're gonna talk about return, uh, return to school. Uh, that's gonna be the big topic on the facility center and, uh, finance, uh, that's a good one there. We have another board meeting on the twenty-eighth, so.
Prior to that, we have a curriculum work session. Um, and then I, you mentioned it earlier, but the, these work sessions of various committees are all virtual and which might make it easier for you folks to just pop in and see what's going on at those. Particularly if, you know, there's a particular area that you're interested in and you'll see the agenda, so.
That is, uh, to my earlier point, that's where the real work is done. Uh, we're here to vote and pass business items, but, uh, there's a lot of work that happens. Not in this room, but in other spaces and, uh, yeah, we're, and those are open meetings to anyone in the community that wishes to tune in. Uh, Dr. Brown, are, are we good? Uh, everyone, we're good. Uh, so thank you, everyone, and have a great night.